Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, the special WebEx meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, May 12th, 2020, now called to order. Uh, Comish- I'm sorry, Councilman Krasinski, are you with us?
Aye, I'm here.
Councilman Nolan?
Sir, yes, sir.
Councilman File? Councilman File? Councilwoman Hess?
Here.
Councilman Taloyan?
Yes.
Councilman Katanzright?
Here.
Councilman Root?
Here.
Councilman Canariki?
Yeah.
It looks like everyone is here except Councilman File. Uh, next we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. From the Wichita State, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 10th, 2020 public hearing?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Pose. The ayes have it. The minutes from the March 10th public meeting are approved. Next on the agenda, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please read bill number forty-four dash twenty?
In order to amend and supplement Title fifteen, Land Use Check, one fifty-four planning and zoning of St. Joseph County Code as amended. The property located at five zero nine three five State Road nine thirty-three, five zero nine four one State Road nine thirty-three, and five zero nine four five State Road nine thirty-three from I Industrial District to C Commercial District, petitioner Bolos Sane.
Bill number forty-four twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Forty-five twenty, in order to amend and supplement Title fifteen, Land Use Check, one fifty-four planning and zoning of St. Joseph County Code as amended. The property located at five four two eight oh Better Street Road from A Agricultural District to R Single Family District, petitioner Klein Custom Homes.
Bill number forty-five twenty is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill forty-six twenty, in order to adopting amendment to section thirties- thirty point one six, the St. Joseph County Code of Indiana, twenty thirteen Human Resources Policies and Benefits Manual by including language allowing continuation of paying for employees willing but unable to work during their reopening period for county work facilities previously closed to emergency, petitioner county commissioners.
Bill number forty-six twenty is assigned to the Budget Administration Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number thirty-nine twenty?
Thirty-nine twenty, in order to amend, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, petitioner commissioners.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number thirty-nine twenty, favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
President Morton? President Morton?
Yes.
This is Commissioner Castelney. Um, had before you, in ordinance, um, could you remind me what the heck the ordinance is? I'm having a tough time pulling up my agenda.
Salary amendment? Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, this is for the Human Resources Director. Uh, so it's a, it's not even correct anything wrong, but it's a it's probably a, uh, it's a proposed salary increase, it looks like.
Yeah, because Kim was not able to use, uh, certain cop time because of duties at the county.
Yes, that, my apologies, yes. She was unable to, um, use, given in light of all the COVID nineteen related activities she's been doing, but it was not prudent and she did not feel comfortable taking time away. So this is being able to compensate her for her, um, unused vacation time, her paid time off.
It's not an additional appropriation or any, she found the money within her budget, so it's just, take care of that. There's no additional cost.
Any questions from council?
Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on thirty-nine twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
I think Councilman Taloyan had a question.
Oh, I didn't hear him. Speak up, sir.
Thank you. I have in my notes that bill thirty-nine twenty was for a safety risk manager.
Uh, no, that's forty twenty.
Yeah, that's not this. That's forty, that's the one coming up.
Yes, that's the next one.
Always one step ahead, aren't you?
Any other questions on thirty-nine twenty?
No.
Hearing none. Does any- does anyone wish to, wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on thirty-nine twenty.
Sorry, I didn't get it needed.
Damn. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Raphael.
Can you? Can you mo- can you please mute your phone when you're not talking?
I am intended to talk to you under this bill.
Who is this?
Carol Kelly Havens.
Who?
Correct.
Please, please, please state your name for the record.
Carol Kelly Havens, twelve O C C, Timberline Trace, North and Granger.
Alright.
I'm probably going to make the same general comment for most of the salary bills. I think we all need a little help to get through the, the COVID thing, the shutdown. But I think we have to be very careful not using a lot of taxpayer funds right now, especially for people that are not working because the taxpayers aren't working either, and they're gonna have trouble coming up with these funds. So I think we need to, um, look, look twice at each of these items, and even if the money is still in the budget, that might be because it didn't get spent on what it was originally intended to be spent on. And we have to be really careful, um, not, not creating a whole host of expenditures here that are just gonna put our county in a bad position, that the taxpayers are then gonna have real trouble, um, doing anything helpful because they're in a bad position too. So that, that's my, my general comment. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I, I saw a message come up on my screen that Jamie O'Brien wanted to speak.
I, I cannot hear you, man. Just this feedback is.
Yep. I saw a message on my screen that Jamie, I, I believe it was Jamie, J. O'Brien, wanted to know how to join the conversation, speak for or against the bill. Is J. O'Brien out there listening? Cause I saw a message come up.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, I didn't want to just speak out and speak over other people, so I typed a message asking how to raise my hand, but I, I wanted to also, consistent with what Ms. Havens said, um, we are, everyone is having tight financial times now, and if there's unspent money in budgets, I would suggest that the money not be spent, so I would also speak against the particular bill. And thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jamie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. President.
Okay, did you, did you hear me when I asked for it, if anyone wanted to speak against the bill? Did you hear me when I said that?
I did, and I was raising my hand. I didn't want to speak over you, so that's why I typed in the chat. I asked, do we just speak out? I don't want to talk over other people.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, speak out. When I ask that question, go ahead, speak out, and we'll, we'll figure it out. But thank you for your comments.
Okay, and thank you. I'm trying to, I know it's difficult with lots of people trying to speak, so I wanted to avoid speaking over other people, so thank you.
No, I appreciate that. Very, very courteous. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of this bill? Hearing none, with, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on thirty-nine twenty. I believe I had a, um, a motion by Ms. Hess to pass the bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nolan. Any further comments from any council member in regards to thirty-nine twenty? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
No.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Canariki?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven one.
Thank you. Let the record show.
If I still on the council, that's Mr. File.
Mr. File, we, we took a roll, and I asked for you, I asked for you to speak up and let me know you were here, not once but twice.
Well, you know, I'm not as good as this.
Thank you. I, I didn't mean it like that, sir. I just, when you said, are you still on the council, I'm just letting you know from a business perspective, I did acknowledge you not once but twice. I was not trying to not acknowledge you, sir.
Okay, comments accepted. Let's move on.
Thank you, let's move on. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number forty twenty?
In order to amend, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, petitioner auditor. Andy, this is the bill with, for, uh, Human Resources to, uh, increase the salary from forty to fifty for that budgeted position.
So, Kim, do you want to give the background of why this is necessary?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Andy, hold on. Hold on, hold on. Okay, let me back up. For the record, thirty-nine twenty was passed by a vote of eight to, eight to one, and I need the committee report from Ms. Hess on forty twenty.
Okay, Mr. President, bill number forty twenty came to the full council without recommendation.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. K- Mr. Castelney?
So, Kim, do you want to start us off, and I'll finish then?
Okay, Kim Karkowitz, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County, offices at two two seven West Jefferson, seventh floor. Um, this is a position that was budgeted for twenty twenty for the county to have a centralized safety program and a safety risk manager to implement that. Um, and the budget was approved. Um, I have been interviewing since the beginning of the year diligently, um, finding the proper candidate for the county and all of the entities that we have and the needs that we would have. I have found a candidate that would fit and would be able to actually exceed what we are needing to do, especially in this time, um, where we have safety as a big priority here within the county, as the employees are returning to work along with the public coming into our buildings. Um, it is a position that was budgeted. There is no additional money needed for this year for this position.
This is Commissioner Andy Castelney, office on the seventh floor of the county city building. I will also add that the reason why there's, there's nothing added for the county year two thousand twenty is because the amount was budgeted but yet filled, so the remaining amount in there would, would cover the salary for this year, and then moving forth to two thousand twenty-one beyond. One of the, the things that we also identified from a safety standpoint is we would need to do trainings for our employees and different department heads and other things, and this individual, if hired, would be able to do those things, and we would not have to outsource that piece or pay a third party to do so. So it would actually, at the minimum, it would be a, um, state revenue neutral moving forward, and it could possibly be I'm sorry, budget saving as well. Glad to answer any question.
Any questions from council, from Mr. Castelney?
Mr. Morton, Mark Katanzright?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Morton?
Yeah.
Questions for, for Kim? Mark Katanzright, just a question, um, the candidate you have for this position, do they have a background in or industrial hygiene, or what is their background?
Their background is actually in municipalities and has, um, over ten years. Um, this person is taking quite a bit of a cut in salary from where they're going to start off as a new venture. So, uh, the project was something that would move them. Uh, to make that move, we just needed a, a little bit more, uh, to meet in the middle.
Understood. So they don't necessarily have any, the same experience with safety programs or implementation of safety, safety strategies?
They have implemented a whole safety program for another municipality, um, that had the same needs that we have in our highway and, you know, other avenues that we have here that, that we need to have done.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, Mr. Morton, this is Mr. Nolan.
Mr. Nolan.
Um, either Kim or Mr. Castelney, can you expand a little bit on the training that this person would be able to provide?
So the OSHA requirements for training, this person is a certified trainer for OSHA, um, which we would need to get our county employees trained in either the ten hour or thirty hour session. That is just one of the major trainings that need to be completed.
And given the price point that we were looking to hire, it's difficult to find someone that has that level of expertise to provide the training. So what was our original identified is to try and keep the salary amount lower, was to allow, um, we were just outsource that particular piece of this. If we can find someone for that amount of money, that's why we anticipated being an actual revenue, at least neutral if not savings.
I understand. Kind of what I was asking is what those, other than OSHA ten or and or OSHA thirty, are there other training classes that this person is currently capable of providing? I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around what that savings should be and not hire the trainer.
Active shooter is something that they have implemented in the past for multiple locations, um, which is something that we still need to do here at the county also.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, we'll now open the public hearing on bill forty twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish, wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill forty twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Morton, this is Mr. Nolan. I would, uh, I got one comment that I'd like to make a motion in favor. Just real quick math here. I don't know how many, exactly how many employees would need OSHA thirty, but at two hundred employees, it's thirty grand. So, it would be a significant savings, so over and above what this is costing. So I make a motion in favor.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Mark Katanzright.
Motion to pass, bill number forty twenty was met by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments from council on forty twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Who is it?
No.
Uh.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Canariki?
Yes.
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight one.
Let the record show that bill number forty dash twenty was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number forty-two twenty?
In order to amend, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, petitioner Probate Court, JJC.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
This comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hello, it's Cheryl Rush, uh, controller at the St. Joseph Probate Court, one thousand South Michigan. We're asking for a salary amendment for probation officer four from seventy-two forty, four thirty-nine to sixty-six five forty-two. And then we're asking for two probation officers to go from seventy-three nine eighty-nine to seventy-nine eight eighty-six. So there is no change to the budget. They're both state mandated. Um, so one is less and one's moving up.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, we, I'll open the public hearing on forty-two twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on forty-two twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Bobby Kay made the motion. Diana, did you second it?
I'll second it.
Alright, thank you. There was a motion to pass, bill number forty-two twenty, made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on forty-two twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Is that yes, Mark?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Sorry. Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number forty-two dash twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number twenty-nine twenty?
In order to amend, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, petitioner adult probation.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with the St. Joseph County Adult Probation Department, office is located on the fourth floor of the county city building. Uh, I come before you today, um, we are changing our executive staff structure, and as a result of that, additional responsibilities and duties have been placed on our assistant chief. Judge Broden has approved the request to increase her salary by twenty-five hundred dollars as a result of these additional duties retroactive to January first. No additional funds are required to accommodate this request, um, as we've hired a PO with a lesser salary and a different line item. Um, so no additional funds are needed right now as there's a surplus in that account.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on bill number twenty-nine twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does, does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill?
What is the total cost of, uh, what is the total cost of this? I mean, I, you say you have appropriated money for it, but what is the cost of it?
Mr. Carlton?
I didn't hear the question, Mr. Morton.
He said, Councilman File said, what is the cost of this appropriation?
Uh, twenty-five hundred dollars. We are moving it from, um, since our salaries are mandated by the state, we hired someone in a different account, um, that has less years of experience, so that way there's a surplus. And as a result of shifting those additional duties, um, because we've taken one executive position away and just made it a line officer, those funds are going to, um, going over to her salary as a result of those additional duties.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that. You know, it's a twenty-five hundred dollar item, so it's not, it's not like some of the other much higher cost items we might want to be considering. Right, so, fine.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do we have, do we have a motion on twenty-nine twenty?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, bill twenty-nine twenty was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on twenty-nine twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
No.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Is that a no, Mark?
Yes, no was a yes.
So sorry, I'm, yes, I'm having a hard time hearing. Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty-nine twenty was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number twenty-eight twenty?
In order to amend, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year twenty twenty, petitioner, auditor, and commissioners.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Uh, Mr. President, bill number twenty-eight twenty comes to the full council with a favor, a favorable recommendation.
Um, okay, um, petitioner?
President Morton, this is Andy Castelney again. Office is remaining on the seventh floor of the county city building. Um, if you recall, this is part of the ERP, and Bree Roberts, um, and, um, John Butler were, had been part of the been part of implementation piece, and the expectation initially with ERP was that we were going to hire a program manager, an implementation manager who would kind of take on those tasks and those functions. And as a result, we decided to go in a different direction, so as a result, uh, Bree and other employees have taken on a kind of outside or normal job responsibilities. So we are looking to compensate them for additional time because they're working, um, over and above the number of hours that they have to work on a regular basis, taking care of these tasks. And, um, it is still an overall cost savings from an implementation standpoint than paying one or two salaries if people adjust.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, uh, Councilman File, um, I thought that, I thought that we already voted on this. I thought that this increase for Bree was already a matter on the table and it was voted yes. Is that wrong?
I, I believe it was, it came out of committee. I believe we discussed it. I, I believe it was, it came out of committee. I believe we discussed it at committee and it received a favorable, a favorable recommendation. But I believe this is the form of action.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, it was just, I guess what the answer is, it was discussed but not voted on by the council? Cause it seems like we discussed it.
Yep, by, by the full council, correct. It was just voted on by that particular commission.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on bill twenty-eight twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish, wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on twenty-eight twenty. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that it, uh, actually starts April one this year. When going back to, uh, January one. Been prorated for this amount for the rest of this year. And we'll discuss, I'm, I would certainly assume that if this passes that we would do it next year, but we'll discuss that at budget time.
There's a motion on the floor to, um, pass with stipulation of starting April one. And then, uh, if it does pass, look into next year's, uh, at budget time. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
I'll second.
Who said second first?
Bobby Kay.
Okay. Motion to pass bill number twenty-eight twenty was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from council on twenty-eight twenty?
I have a question, Mr. Morton.
Mark Katanzerite?
Just to, just to clarify, Mr. Nolan's motion was to begin this pay structure at April one versus going all the way back to January, so not the full amount. Um, what they asked him, was it, was it ten thousand or seventy-five hundred they were asking for? It was ten thousand, correct?
Yes.
So that, so it wouldn't necessarily be a full ten thousand, it would be one quarter, essentially one quarter less than what they're asking. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That was my intent.
But actually, that's just, it's actually not ten thousand for her. They pushed the salary from forty-three six nine three to fifty, so not ten thousand for her, the other four thousand is for, I'm assuming it's Ryan. He's up there, Andy, is that correct?
That would be Ryan and then taxes and then perf.
Hello? I thought, I thought Mr. Costelli mentioned John Carlson.
Yeah, so I, I, I mentioned John Butler, but I misspoke.
Or John Butler, I'm sorry. Yeah, John Butler is already at this. That's where his salary is, my project manager is assisting, he's working for Bree. So he, his, uh, salary is not being amended at all. I mean, the issue with Bree and these folks is they've been doing this since, I think the reason they put it, the petition has had to go back to January first. Eddie jump in if you can, or John Murphy that, uh, you guys have been, John, you've been dealing with it more than I have, that, that they have been working since January on this.
Well, I know it's going pretty hot and heavy right now. We're getting the chart of accounts all set up and we just had a meeting today on the general ledger with Bree, myself and Katie in our office. So they're putting a lot of work on it. I don't remember exactly when they started, but they're certainly working hard on it now.
It was early in the year and I mean, that's kind of the point is I understand that it's now is, they're doing a lot. I mean, I think the, the thought process that it wasn't really full bore, January one, a compromise to get something, cause I think they're absolutely going to be working harder, doing extra duties for the rest of this year. And I fully expect that to be next year as well.
Any other comments from council?
Well, are we going to discover, uh, discuss on the amended resolution or how do we handle Mr. Nolan's input?
His, his motion, his motion was basically to start at April one, so that's the motion on the floor.
But the one that's on the floor is April one.
Right, the motion and a second on the floor is to start April one.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Triple?
Yes.
Does that, by, by Corey, by Corey changing that to start at April one, is that considered an amendment or is that just a motion on the floor?
I, I, he's fine, you're fine to move forward with the vote.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Taloyan?
No.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Miss Hess?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
No, no, it's eight to one.
All right, Taloyan?
Taloyan was a no.
You voted no?
Yes. Taloyan was a no, it's eight to one.
All right, Mark, you gotta speak up a tad more, man. My hearing aid ain't working too good. Eight to one, my bad.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twenty-eight twenty was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read, please read the next bill, bill number thirty-eight twenty?
Thirty-eight twenty, in ordinance amending, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2020, petitioner probate court JJC.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Hi, Cheryl Rush, controller at, uh, St. Joseph Probate Court, one thousand South Michigan. We're requesting a salary amendment for the court administrator from fifty-six seven seventy-five to sixty thousand nine seventy-five. It's completely grant funded and will only be for the duration of the grant, which is December thirty-first.
Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill thirty-eight twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on thirty-eight twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number thirty-eight twenty was made by Councilman Katanzerite. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from council on thirty-eight twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Katanzerite?
Yes.
Kennerackey?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Miss Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
The yes.
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine, nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirty-eight twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, bill number forty-one twenty?
Forty-one twenty, in ordinance amending, ordinance eighty nineteen, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2020, petitioner prosecutor.
Mr. Krasinski, commit, committee report, please.
President Morton, this comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. Petitioner? Mr. Eisenhofer?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is it on, unmute?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this is a, a request to appropriate the, uh, APS grant for next year in amount of nine, uh, four hundred and two thousand oh ninety-five. It's for the salaries for the investigator and for the, um, director. The, um, we're a hub county, we're covering St. Joe, Elkhart, Marshall and Casiato. And as we speak, they're still going out with the virus rampant. They've had fourteen hundred and fifty-five cases in those four counties and sorry to say, there's been fifty-four deaths. Uh, this does not provide any increases for the investigators. The, uh, APS people kept the grant amount as the same, so we didn't provide any income. But it's for, uh, next year, starting July, and it's four hundred and two thousand oh ninety-five.
Any questions from council for Mr. Eisenhofer?
Well, you're, I think, as I understand, it's four hundred and two thousand, this is something we've been doing and it's not an increase in pay?
No, it's not an increase, not an increase in pay for any of them.
And I, and we have to decide, uh, a budget for next year this early this year?
This is a fiscal grant. It starts, uh, July first of each year.
So it's just, it starts this July first?
Yes, this is, this is a renewal of the existing grant. It'll be effective July first.
Yeah, seven, one, twenty.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from council for Mr. Eisenhofer? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill forty-one twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on forty-one twenty. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion for passage.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number forty-one twenty was made by Councilwoman Hess and a second was made by like five different people. Who spoke up first on that second?
Mark Katanzerite, how's that? I don't care.
A second was made by Councilman Katanzerite. Third by Mr. Nolan, fourth by Mr. Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on forty-one twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kennerackey?
Mr. Kennerackey?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Ruth?
Yes.
Oh, I hear you. I'm clear there. Uh, Mr. Ruth, yes. Now up to Mr. Krasinski.
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Miss Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Taloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that bill number forty-one twenty was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, can you please read the next bill, bill number forty-three twenty?
Forty-three twenty, in ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, amending ordinance eighty nineteen, twenty twenty salary, adding for employed officers and employees for all departments of the county. Providing a COVID nineteen hazard pay increase to the county police department, essential employees who have continued to provide law enforcement services to our residents while increasing their risk contracting the virus. Petitioner, Sheriff?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
Uh, I'm sorry, President Morton, I don't have anything with a recommendation on this bill.
I think it came without.
It came without, it came, it came without recommendation.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Uh, Sheriff William Redman, offices at St. Joe County Jail, four oh one West Sample Street, South Bend. I'm requesting that each of our merit officers, corrections officers and medical staff begin a fifteen percent hazard pay increase for their dedication and commitment on keeping our community safe while subjecting themselves and their families to an increased risk during COVID nineteen while serving our community. Our staff must go hands-on with people daily from conducting safety pad downs of individuals to transporting people in our vehicles, to performing medical examinations at the jail, as well as entering homes and businesses not knowing what's behind those exterior walls. Since the beginning of this pandemic, we have had sixty-two employees quarantined, that is up from thirty-five, uh, that I reported two weeks ago. Uh, they have been quarantined at their homes along with their family members. Our nursing staff has treated sixty-five inmates, that is up from forty-one from two weeks ago with COVID nineteen symptoms. And according to the National FOP, there have been a hundred and one police officer deaths attributed to COVID nineteen. And that is up from seventy-seven as I reported to you all two weeks ago. Uh, with the weather and the, uh, weather getting nicer, stay-at-home orders being lifted, uh, we are seeing a increase in jail bookings, uh, which we anticipate will continue. Uh, which will then cau- uh, cause more isolations of inmates in our facility, putting our officers and our correctional staff at risk. Uh, we will have to continue, as you all know, we had our first positive COVID, uh, nineteen, uh, inmate last week, who was transferred, transported due to court order from, uh, Westville Correctional Facility to our facility. We anticipate more court orders, uh, which will continue. Uh, we will have to, um, transport other individuals from other facilities here to our facility, which again increases our, um, risks for all of our staff.
Any questions from council for the sheriff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on bill forty-three twenty. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill?
I do, Mr. Morton. Jamie O'Brien.
Go ahead, sir. Name and address, please, for the record.
N one five eight two two Cedar Ridge Court, Granger, Indiana. The, uh, good deputies and other employees of the sheriff's department are experiencing additional risk.
Sammy. Sammy, you have, you have a lot of feedback, I can't understand you.
Yeah, I hear that feedback too. I think the deputies have been in fine jobs.
I, I, Sammy, I, I don't know about anyone else, but I can't hear you.
I can't hear you, I can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Jamie.
Okay, I understand. But, move ahead, that's fine.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill?
Yes.
Name and address for the record. Name and address for the record.
This is Cali Rivers, twelve oh three two Pemellon Trace North, Granger. Um, I have great appreciation for Sheriff Redman and for all of his officers and staff. Really appreciate these officers up here in Granger. Um, this is an issue of fairness. We're all dealing with the extra hazards of the COVID virus right now. Um, these, these officers face greater hazards than I ever face, knowing that they walk into potentially a loaded gun behind the door. I think they, they are already receiving hazard pay in their salaries. You know, all of us that worry about, um, exposure to the virus, which I think in the end we're going to find is a lot less of the use and all of the heights. But at any rate, um, going to find is a lot less of the reason, all of the heights, but at any rate, um, all of us face that hazard, and we're not getting any increase in pay. All of the delivery people that keep bringing stuff to our doors, and, and people who bring stuff to the, to the markets, and people working in all of these places are not getting any hazard pay. As a matter of fact, they're lucky if they're getting their usual pay. They just don't have the advantage of somebody else's money that, that can be put toward giving them extra money. And of course, government always has access to the taxpayers' money. So in, in the interest of fairness, I don't think we should be giving any hazard pay since no one else can get them. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of bill forty-three twenty?
Mr. File?
This is Mike Cannon. I have a, I just have one other clarification in terms of what you all are voting on. Are you voting at the fifteen percent increase, or ten percent, or five, or a bonus? Could you clarify that for me?
We haven't had a motion yet.
The bill before us is fifteen percent. There is no motion.
Is there anyone that wish, anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of forty-three twenty?
Yeah, Mr. File, first, uh, first that to do with procedure, um, I thought the council met on this, and I thought the council sent this to committee without recommendation. I thought then the procedure-
We did. We did.
I thought the, well, what, what did the committee come back to us with?
It, it was sent, it was sent to the full council without a recommendation, and now it's up for a vote with, amongst the full council.
But I thought it went back to, to a committee, uh, could have been the budget-
No, no, no.
Well, I thought, we did, we definitely sent it someplace without recommendation.
We sent it, we sent it to the full, we sent it to the full council without a recommendation.
I thought the full council was there.
That was at, that was at the committee meeting.
Oh. I'm surprised, because I'm not on a committee. Okay, uh, having said that, um, two, three things that I would comment about. Uh, the first one is, this has nothing to do with the safety of the police, police officers. Um, if we were to buy bulletproof vests, or if we were to spend this kind of money on COVID prices, and do some other things in the health department, this would improve the, uh, safety of the police officers. So this has nothing to do with the safety of the police officers. It is a, it is a new way to make more money, and it may or may not have merit, but it has nothing to do with the safety of the officers. Secondly, uh, if we go down this path, we cannot just add a hundred and fifty-seven people, we cost us six hundred thousand dollars. We gotta add everybody in the nursing home, we gotta add everybody in the health department, we gotta add everybody else who, who can make the same case. And that, that I think, I think, and I'm, uh, willing to have accounting people give us the number, but I think that would take us at least a million dollars if we apply the safety principle to other people who often take, uh, regular risks as part of our stock. Once it becomes six hundred thousand, which it is now, they're forced to assume that more, I think it becomes an unfair burden on people who don't even have the job. I, I remind everybody in, in the county government that they are extremely fortunate. Let me say it again, extremely fortunate. While other people are, are, don't have the job at all, and are desperate to the point that they even don't know how to pay for their bills for their family, we have full pay, and full benefits for all the people in our organization, including all of said officers of the police department. So I don't think it's time for our people are being first treated by us, they get full pay. Finally, I would like to say, they're friends with the police department, but I think the public opinion of the police department, and the public opinion of everybody else who are working for the county government, stands on the shoulders of opinion of our people. We, 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 it's, it's served as the strength of the government. And so for us to put a million dollar added burden on the public, of course, I think, bad policy, we will give it a ten-year, for not caring for their needs, and I think I'd give a bad reputation for it.
Mr. Morton, this is Mike Cannon, I just want to make one correction.
Go ahead.
Mr. File referenced something around six hundred thousand dollars. If John Murphy's calculations are correct, and Sheriff Redmond's calculations are correct, they're talking about three hundred and twenty-three employees, three hundred and twenty-one merit officers, twenty-one folks at the courthouse, other staff, one seventy-nine. So when you figure all the benefits in, which is what you asked us to do, what you're voting on for the police department is, the total would be seven hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Seven oh one, five sixty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
In other words, we're, in other words, we're asking, what do we come up with seven hundred and one thousand? New money.
Did you hear that, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, uh, yes, that is correct, seven hundred, well, seven hundred thousand dollars is new money, yes.
Also, Mr. Hammond, does that include the people at the nursing homes, who, uh, everybody is over thirty-three years, those people also live?
Well, no, I mean, we're not, we're charging nursing homes, but, uh, to that end, the, uh, John Murphy and Steve Dalton and I tried to consider other folks that might think of themselves as in the line of fire, if you will. And, um, you know, the list isn't exclusive, but, you know, there are other people I'm sure that will come back. You mentioned the health department, I can, we've talked about others that might be coming back and saying, well, we, we should deserve hazard pay too, and John Murphy took the best of his ability, that, uh, that could be another one point seven million dollars, if you say yes to everybody.
One point seven million?
If you say yes to everybody, if you come back and you say yes to the JJC, and yes to, uh, you know, to the, to the, uh, health department, and yes to PCE, and yes, and yeah, I mean, conceivably, so, you know, that's worst-case scenario.
Mr. President?
Ms., Ms. Hess?
Uh, hi. Uh, I'm, I want to say that I'm generally in favor of some kind of hazard compensation for, uh, county employees at most risk, however, I think that we need a lot more in-depth discussion and, uh, research into the matter before we vote on this matter, so I would like to make a motion to send it back to committee.
I'll second it.
There, there, there's a motion on the floor made by Ms. Hess to send bill number forty-three dash twenty back to committee. I believe a second was made by-
Bobby Kate.
Mr. Krasinski. So there's a motion on the floor to send bill forty-three twenty back to committee, made by Ms. Hess, and it was seconded by Mr. Krasinski. Any further comments on forty-three twenty?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
I just want to comment, yeah, I, I applaud Sheriff Redmond for going out, going up to bat for his, for his employees, and I, and I don't dispute that they're not at more increased risk with this COVID-nineteen virus, but I do agree with, um, Councilmember Hess, and also others who have mentioned that there probably are other county employees that are at risk at varying levels, um, maybe not as much as a police officer, but at a different level, but I think, um, I applaud the sheriff for bringing this to our attention. There are other municipalities in the state and in the country that are considering things such as hazard pay like this. And, um, I think if we give it more thought, take it back to committee, um, I think we probably need to think about all the other county employees that are at risk, or at an increased risk, and at what degree of risk they're at, and make it an all-inclusive bill if we're gonna do it, if we are actually gonna do it, let's make it an all-inclusive bill that includes all county employees that are at risk and at whatever degree of risk they're at, and offer some form of compensation to those, um, not just the county police officers, but others that are at risk too. So I, I concur with Councilmember Krasinski and Councilmember Hess on returning this back to committee for further study, but you want the sheriff and his employees to know that that your question is not falling on deaf ears, and we're, we're giving it more thought and more consideration.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? This vote is to return forty-three twenty back to committee?
Yeah, Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
The desk?
Yes.
Mr. Tolyan?
Yes.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yeah.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that bill number forty-three twenty, the motion to send back to committee passed nine to zero. Next is public hearing, a public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read bill number thirty-seven twenty?
Ordnance appropriating transferring money for the purposes here specified for the several departments here enlisted in St. Joe's County Government.
May I have a motion on bill thirty-seven twenty?
Move for passage.
Do I hear second? A vote to pass thirty-seven twenty was made by Councilwoman Katanzright, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on thirty-seven twenty? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tolyan?
Just to clarify, is the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars the laythrobe in this bill?
I think so, uh, uh, Mr. Tolyan, I believe it is.
It is, it is.
Stand by, just stand by, hold on, stand by. I'm looking through here, it is, it is, it is, Mark.
Yeah, item T.
No.
You want to vote, Nolan, the whole thing, or just item T?
Uh, no on item T, no on release of the forty pickup.
Good, I can, I can make an honor of that. Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Katanzright?
Yeah.
Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries overall nine to zero, except it carries eight to one on item, excuse me, on item T and on the item which talks about the leases.
Item, item T and the, and the leases?
I don't know which item, someone look where the leases are for the vehicles, right?
Is that E?
Item E, yes. Okay, item E?
Is it L? Is it, is it L?
Oh, E.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, so item E, item E and item T?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let the record show that bill number thirty-seven twenty was overall passed by a vote of nine to zero, except for item T and item E, which was eight to one.
Right.
Thank you. That concludes public hearing for this evening. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous items?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Councilman Morton?
Yes.
This is, uh, Andy Castellini. Um, I had a question. Um, during the committee meeting last, a couple of weeks ago, we had discussed, um, the possibility of here, of having first reading and also taking action on what I believe is bill forty-six twenty, and kind of modifying the emergency pay function we used to topic it up to the COVID-nineteen thing as we were beginning to reopen county offices and ramp up. Um, the thought was by, um, multiple attorneys that we take action and, and we tweak that so we can move forward.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have plans on-
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I, I presume that Councilman Castellini is referring to the, uh, ordinance thing. We got emailed the draft ordinance by Peter Augustino on Friday, is that the one he's referring to?
Yes.
Forty-six twenty?
Yeah.
So, and, and the que- the question he's asking us is if, whether we can act on that document, suspend our rules, and have unanimous agreement that we would be willing to do that in order to move that forward, is that right?
Yes, no, that's, I know what he's asking. Mr. Treppel?
Yes.
So we, we would need to have a unanimous vote to suspend the rules?
That's correct.
Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules to vote this evening on forty-six twenty?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Did Mr. Treppel get a chance to review that ordinance?
I did, it worked, I, I did, it works in concert with the previous two ordinances we passed, for purposes of stay-at-home pay, emergency pay, et cetera. Since we have some employees working in the building, some at home, some remote, this is part of the phase-back of the employees. It is consistent with what we're trying to-
I, I, I heard you say you worked on the previous two, did you get a chance to review the one that was emailed to us on Friday?
Yes.
Are you, you a part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so, and we need to take a vote to have a unanimous decision whether we are going to suspend the rules to vote on forty-six twenty this evening?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Given that the county will be reopening probably before our next county council meeting, and, uh, there might be a necessity to pass this ordinance tonight, I would be willing to suspend the rules, or make the motion to suspend the rules, to consider voting on bill forty-six twenty tonight, that's Mark Katanzright.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
It was voted, there was a motion on the floor by Mr. Katanzright, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess to suspend the rules, uh, to enable us to vote on forty-six twenty this evening. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yeah, Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tolyan?
No.
Katanzright?
Katanzright?
Yes.
Katanzright? Katanzright?
Yeah.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
The motion fails, the motion fails, eight to one.
Yep.
So, this is, uh, Commissioner Castellini, so I will have to-
I can't hear you. Somebody needs to mute their phone, I cannot hear you.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right. So, this is Commissioner Castellini, I will, um, reach out to HR. I- I don't know what, if- if we will then be able to continue to pay our employees as we move through. I know we've kind of, we're able to work through the most current pay period, so I don't know. Um, I- I will- I will effort to figure out what we are able to do employee-wise for the next pay period, so.
Mr. Castellini, would you please, uh, keep me, uh, informed on what- what, uh, what you find out and how we move forward on this?
Correct, I will, I will do so.
All right, sir. Next- next item?
No, next item, go ahead. I'm commenting on how this is only going to screw things up in terms of, uh, when the HR's worked out and payroll and folks, so I hope the person who voted no understands that, understands that we're adding, that would be both moving on.
Next item is unfinished business. Next item is new business. Next item is adjournment, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
opposed?
Aye.
This mo- this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.